I don't think we're getting it.
Right. Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order the Health, the Human Services Committee. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could take the roll, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I'll, I'll accept a motion to accept.
So moved, Baldwin.
Support Vandembosh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any citizens to be heard?
There are none.
Any conceptual updates or updates?
None.
Any, no old business, so new business? The library has asked, they are requesting that they close the library early on Wednesday, July 21st, for the Rotary International Day Parade. And they are requesting to close on October 11th for training staff and development.
Make a motion that we send that to the full board.
Support McConnell.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Are there any other human services matters? There's no information. At this time, I will accept a motion to file and receive the packets.
Moved, Rushing.
Support Vandembosh.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And then a motion to adjourn.
Baldwin, so moved.
Support Vandembosh.
Thank you.
All right, I hope I can be that fast. I will call the Sinclair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting for order, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes, here, sorry.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here, thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve agenda as presented?
So moved.
Baldwin, support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens to be heard this evening?
We do not.
Seeing none, we have no updates. Are there any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
Old business, we have none. Under new business, we have two items, 7A, the 2021 Homeland Security Grant Program. It's the Operation Stone Garden Grant application. It's an amount of $285,000. This is 100% federally funded. It's to patrol the borders. This money gets split up amongst quite a few municipalities. Most of the police departments in the, in the county, a little bit goes to the state. Some goes up to Tuscola County, I believe. I don't know, it, it's one of the counties north of us and it's not Sanlao. But the money gets, gets spread out. And we've been receiving it for five years and we're looking to send this on to the full board if we could for approval.
I make the motion, Bohm.
Support Baldwin.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, contract approval request for Teresa Novacel. This is, in the public defender's office, this, this has been imposed by the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. We've been working on these for a little bit at time now. There's been two part-time office, or two part-time positions, they're 15 to 20 hours a week. It pays $25,000 a year. Teresa was a retired prosecutor and is respected in the community and we look forward to working with her. These people will be at all the arraignments that are being made between Marine City and Port Huron and the jail. So if we could have a motion to send to the full board, I would appreciate it.
So moved, Rushing.
Support Vandembosh.
Motion in support, are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other judiciary and public safety matters, does anybody have anything?
You have a new undersheriff? We have a new undersheriff and Matt Paulus officially retired yesterday?
Oh, that, yeah, that's right. That's as of today, isn't it?
Yep, so they had the swearing-in ceremonies yesterday. It sounds like it was pretty well-attended, some excited people. The, the changing of the guard has now been complete, right? Since Donilon's retirement and Matt came on, but Paulus was still here, so I hear that that went very well. So I don't know if we'll send something maybe to Paulus, to undersheriff Paulus.
I, I was happy to see that Matt could stay on for a little while. It's, it's nice to do a, a smooth transition, let everybody get in there and get their feet wet and figure out what's going on. And I, I think it's been, been great and Matt's done a great job and I know, I know we're going to be in good hands, so I, I think everything's good. But we probably should get some, some type of a proclamation or something for Matt prepared if we could.
35 years of service, I think, all told.
Yeah, that's nice. I do have one other matter. It's been brought to some people's attention that I, it said that I don't reside in my district. Sue and I did sell our house in, I don't remember if it was March, or April, or May, whatever, it closed. About a year ago, we had an extra house in town that we had rented and we quit renting it and we remodeled it and I decided to put it in my son's name. And it's in the village of K-Pac. And when we sold our house, we decided to be a drain on him, somewhat like he's been on us for 26 years. So we use that house to stay when we're in K-Pac. I, I still do have a cottage or a trailer in Lexington that we stay in the summer months. I've had it for 17 years and, you know, we shut the water off in the winter because it's not a, it's not a year-round place. And I've had a house in Florida for over 25 years and we do come down to Florida. I did list my house down here today, so I don't know how much longer we're going to be doing it. But I, I still do have a residence that I stay at. And that's where my driver's license is there, my mail goes there. When I'm working there in the summer, that's where I stay and I have a room there. So as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's where my residence. So if anybody has any questions, they can certainly send them on to me. I have no problem talking to anybody about it.
Greg, I appreciate you addressing that because I have served with commissioners over the years that, you know, some have residences, you know, that they'll go to Florida and they'll, you know, the wintertime stuff, they've got places back here. I've had situations where people have sold and this has come up before. And I know recently this question has come up regarding your residence. So I really do appreciate you just addressing, you know, addressing this and getting it out in front of it.
Yeah, I can, can honestly say it's the first time that I haven't paid property taxes in, in my K-Pac area like I've done for, for a lot, a lot of years. But that's still what I consider home and I, I think I spend as many days there now as I have the last 10 years. So we do flit around a little bit and go back and forth to different places, but that's still, that's still where I hang my hat.
Well, nothing in the statute says that you have to own. You can rent, you can own other properties. So it's where you're at the majority of the time and where your license is. So, you know, I appreciate you getting in front of it too. When I received an email regarding it, actually the person never gave a name, but when we looked up and down the table and who had a 0% homestead somewhere and who had 100%, you know. So I, you know, I appreciate the answers and you talking with me so I could answer the, answer the questions that somebody had. But when you look into it, nothing says you have to reside 365 days a year in the same home that you own. There, there are availabilities. You can, as long as you reside in the district, then you're good and, and you do.
Right. And actually, we're, we're debating whether to build a house this summer in Yale or I'm, actually, my aunt passed away and we're going to be purchasing her house and, so I don't know. We're, we're going to do something more than likely. 26-year-olds don't need to be living with their parents and/or the parents living with them, so we'll see how that all pans out.
I lived at home until I was 31, just for the record, and I still wish I was at home. It was a lot cheaper.
I would appreciate that if you don't share that with my son. Okay, motion to receive and file, please.
Baldwin, so moved.
Support, Beeden.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Rushing.
Support Vandembosh.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
All right, moving on to Sinclair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee. We're starting with the public hearing?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:11.
Support Baldwin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone to address the board?
I've received nothing.
No.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, close the public hearing at 7:12, or 6:12, I'm sorry. Second, Bohm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Moving on to any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda as written.
Make motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Support McConnell.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard?
There are none.
No updates, no conceptual initiatives?
David, just one, just one quick one regarding the Marine City Marina Project. As many of you know, Dave and I have been working with those guys down there. Recently passed at their last meeting to have basically an application of the DNR Trust Fund. That's currently in the works. I know I did share that application with a lot of the people, quite, quite lengthy when you look at those applications. And they actually had hired Six Rivers to help them through that particular process. Dave and I had a meeting with some of the local foundations recently and they seemed to have a, a strong interest in some additional support. Probably most of you are aware that that did score out number one in the least, in the recent Blue Meets Green priority. So this is kind of a step one, is probably a two or three-step approach for the city of Marine City to put Marine back in Marine City, as they would say down there. So it's progressing well.
Good news.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to new business. 7A, 2020 Drink Commissioners Annual Report.
Make a motion forward, that's to the full board.
Support.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to Goodell's Community Center Pavilion Roofing, and this will be for final action. That was given to, or lowest bid was, what was, was it? Do you have that right there, Carrie?
Yep, it was to Mike Hayes Roofing.
I would make a motion to, for final approval for Mike Hayes Roofing in the amount of $40,440.
Baldwin, support.
Any questions on? And that's the roll call vote. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Goodell's Historic Building Cedar Shingle Replacement.
Make a motion forward, that's to the full board.
Support Baldwin.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Resolution 2104, approval of brownfield plan for the Marine City Apartments. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Baldwin.
Second, Bohm.
Jeff Donaldson is here, I don't know if.
I just want to make sure. I just wanted to clarify that we are seeking final action on that this evening, the approved, that resolution.
It's not in my paperwork, is it? All right.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a rush to get there and it was, I, it was realized at the last second that that was not included, that part of that, that request was not in there. But the public hearing that you held this earlier was in reference to this resolution and this plan.
Okay.
I, I'll amend my motion for final action.
I'll amend my second for final action, Bohm.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
It's listed in some of the paperwork that no one was, that the building was empty. It wasn't upon purchase, they actually emptied the building, correct? They had tenants above it, some even special needs?
I'm not sure when, I'm not sure when that building, when it was, when the tenants moved out. I know that members of the Marine City Commission and staff were, did, took a tour of the facility not that long ago and it's in quite rough shape. And it looked like it'd been vacant for quite some time. So to the point where the, there was holes in the floor all over the place on all levels, the stairs were sagging as we were going up them. And then the exterior of the building, the facade was actually peeling off and there was a gap about this far, big, about, about 12 inches between the facade and where it's attached to the building at the very top of the building. So it certainly appears that it's been vacant for quite some time.
Now, I have a question, and now the brownfield is, majority of it is usually used for environmental cleanups, correct?
Not necessarily. So brownfield, brown, in, in the state of Michigan, brownfields can be used to address a lot of different things. In the, in this particular case, this facility, this building is a, a brownfield, deemed a brownfield because of it's been deemed obsolete by, by the, a certain level of assessor. The assessor has to be of a certain level per the statute. And in touring the building, and that was one of the reasons the, the city council wanted to tour the building is to see, is it truly obsolete? And, and to bring that building back to life would be, by all accounts, pretty much prohibitive. The heating, the cooling's out there, there's no ADA requirements, as I mentioned. You couldn't even go upstairs without being concerned that you were going to go through the stairs to get up there to the second level. There was water intrusion throughout the whole building. You can see where there had been standing water in all levels. And I did not go into the boiler room, but we actually had to have, we had a, one of the city officials there who's familiar with inspections and all that. They took a look at it and realized, and acknowledged that the boiler, the heating facilities were probably well beyond repair.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none. Is this a roll call vote or?
Do a voice call?
As a, on a final action too?
There's no money involved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll oppose.
I will also. Motion carried. Moving on to, thank you very much. Moving on to contract approval for BMJ Engineers and Survey for Final Action. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support Baldwin.
Motion support. Any questions on the contract approval? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Motion carried, moving on to Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report. Can I get a motion?
Make motion to receive and file.
Can I get Bohm the support?
Yeah.
That works.
Think I overtalked him.
Any questions on the activity report?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to informational only.
Make motion to receive and file.
Support Baldwin.
Any questions on that?
No, under, Dave, under other environmental and public works matters, just before the information only, I guess I could have done this under updates, but if I may do.
We got a motion on that one.
Oh, we haven't finished the, okay, yep.
As soon as we handle the motion.
Got it.
If all, all in favor about receiving a file?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So the, for about 10 years, Mark Broschu and Fort Gresham Township and Rob Crawford and the rest of the crew up there has been trying to get an easement, actually several easements from the city of Detroit from the Great Lakes Water Authority for some bike path. So, and then Bill Bullard, he and I have been working on it for probably the last year and a half. And, you know, as you know, Bill Bullard passed away this, this winter. So Bill Greatop had kind of picked up the ball and, and finished it. And this morning, he picked up the final signed easement encroachment permits from the city of Detroit. Guy got them in my hands. The last step is to just record them with our register deeds, so there's a little bit, but this is maybe the very last piece in a 10-year project to just get these easements in place. Now, we still have to find the money to build the bike path, but having the easements has been, it was like the parting of the seas to get this done. So he was able to deliver it then to Fort Gresham Township this afternoon and he said, oh, it exists, it's like a unicorn, it actually exists. So we only have one step left to get that done. But it, it was a, it was a group effort through what Bill Bullard and Greatop this morning and Broschu has been great at just the follow-up. But as, as Detroit would change people over and the new general counsel and it just, we couldn't get it done. So hopefully this is, we're right there. We can, we can see the finish line, so I just wanted to, to bring that up.
Congratulations, and I'll knock on wood for you.
Thank you.
You're not nervous that it got approved on whatever today's date is, are you?
Oh, God, I didn't even think about that. Well, I wasn't, Greg. I am now.
Well, at least it was a happy thought for today.
Well, also on other public works, I had a meeting with, down in Ira Township with Clay, Ira, and Algonquin about sewer capacity to help spur that development on 26 Mile and we, Kirk Weston and that from the road commission and their, the director from the wastewater treatment plant, we're all together. And we made some headway, we've got some areas to work with and then.
Good.
Yeah, it's, it's going to take a while. We've got to get some carrots on sticks and see if we can get a few things done.
10 years, 10 years for these three sheets.
I'm hoping it doesn't take us 10 years. Water and sewer does take a little longer.
You're in the right direction.
And we'll have a meeting when Jeff gets back in town with China, Marine City and East China and try and work on getting the east end to participate like the west end's working on. So we can get a coordinated effort together, so.
Good.
You hear that, Jeff?
Good news.
Yeah, no, I actually had a follow-up phone call with Kurt today and I really think the next steps, getting together, as you said, with all the different entities, lots of conversations with infrastructure. As many of you know, I've said it at previous meetings, we've recently had four submittals at the EDA within the last three-week period that we weren't even able to respond to. I know I shared some of those with you. Larger tracts of land, water, sewer, as it really sits today, we're probably not even in the game and that just, it's painful for me to say that. So we've got to, we've got to really identify who has what, where the areas of economic development make most sense in the county. And I really think we're making some pretty good strides in the right direction.
Yeah, and we've got some things working in our favor. We've got some things working against us, but it's things we can overcome. We've got good infrastructure in with our Class A roads. We went through with Kurt Weston today and we've got a lot of the area covered with Class A roads. We just need to get some of that water and sewer taken care of. And we've got gas in a lot of the areas, but it's just that water and sewer, that last piece and getting some property owners together that want to sell and want to develop. And we've got a little bit of zoning work to work on too, so. With that, can I get a motion to receive and file packets?
Baldwin, so moved.
Support Rushing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Before you adjourn, do we need to talk about 10A and, or I'm sorry, 10B and 10C?
Or do we just do it all together?
Well, they were all filed, weren't they?
Yes.
Can we file them all together?
Yes.
They were all filed on the same motion.
With motion 7A?
No, for 10, 10A.
Sorry, 10A, yep, okay.
All together.
Okay.
All in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on.
This time I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Moving on to two additions, deletion, changes to the agenda. If we have none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion. Motion Vandembosh.
Support Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard?
We do not.
Seeing none, we have no updates. Do we have any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
We have none, no old business. So we'll move to new business, 7A, Manning Table Position Reclassification Proposal. This is from the Register of Deeds, our county clerk, this moving from Class 2 to a Class 3 and basically it's a, an increased responsibility and did get approval and blessing from the Human Resources Division. So if I could have a motion to forward this to the full board.
So moved, Baldwin.
Support Vandembosh.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Motion passed. 7B, Fleet Repair and Maintenance RFP Results and Agreements. Have a motion to forward to full board?
So moved, Beeden.
Support, Van den Bosch.